Welcome to the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council at 6 o'clock, Thursday, March 8, 2018. As we start each of our regular meetings, we will begin with a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Aller.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilperson Aller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Carson.
Present.
Councilperson DeBarnes.
Yes.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Councilperson Nassar.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you all for coming tonight. We start each of our meetings with 30 minutes of time for public comments on any items that are not on the agenda. Having said that, if anybody would like to come to the podium and speak, we'll go ahead and start that 30 minutes. Please give your name and address for the record when you come in. Thank you.
Brian Bennett, Terre Haute. At the last two meetings, I've made comments at which I've mentioned that in the interest of greater transparency and better communication that the mayor might consider attending these meetings. So I'm glad to see him in attendance tonight.
Thank you.
Donald Hyde, Over Team 11, Poplar Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. I'm afraid tonight I'm going to have to depend upon my impromptu speaking skills. I planned on talking about something else, and then an article I read in the newspaper changed all that. But in a way, it still coincides with what I've been talking about the entire time I've come here, my concern about the democracy we're sitting in. This time, I've got to go to the other side of the equation. Apparently, and I hope it's true, there's going to be a large walkout of the school children on two days, both highlighting the terrible mass shootings. And they're kind of upset with the national, state, and local government for what they're not doing to keep the kids safe. I can't say I disagree with that. And I hope that the schools will take it upon themselves to do their job. And what I mean by their job is this: Those kids have a right to walk out. But if the schools are, especially the ones that have the elementary school kids, are smart, they will create a way for those kids to do a protest, not necessarily leave the school, but be there. And that would accomplish two things. First of all, our problem with democracy right now in this country, whether you believe it or accept it or not, is lack of communications. Now, of all the people you can think of living in our democracy, that gets the least attention are the children. They don't get any rights, they don't have any responsibilities, and they don't have any, you know, other than the parent that cares about them. Therefore, if they could figure out some way, and them being educators, and I could have been one of those educators, so I know they can do it, they could come up with a way for those kids to have a protest without actually leaving the school grounds for the second half of the day. And the reason I mention this is in 1967, as a seventh grader at Sarah Scott, there was a big teacher's strike. And I remember this, and I don't remember many things, but I remember that day. At lunch, it was around the school, and all of us kids talked about it. After lunch, because we all wanted to eat before we left, we were going to walk home. We were just going to leave. And back in those days, you could just literally walk home. Now, the schools weren't that far from our houses like they are now. Anyway, we all got together, the bell rang, it was lunchtime, we all went out for lunch, we played, and then the bell rang to go back into the school. We all just started walking out. They couldn't do anything about it. And they come out, and the principals talked to us and all that stuff, and we all just kept on walking. The reason we did that was because we weren't being told why there was a teacher's strike. They weren't telling us anything. No, we were kids, it wasn't our business. Therefore, we said, "Well, if they can strike, we'll strike. If our teacher's not going to be there, we're not going to be there." Believe it or not, it happened. It only lasted one day, and the teacher's strike ended within a day or two afterwards. But the thing is this: Here it is, more than 50 years later, and those kids are in the same boat. Things are happening on the news and to them, to their schools, and nobody ever explains to them what's going on. Now, a democracy...
Mr. Hyde, I'm sorry, if you...
All right, let me get to it real quick.
Thank you.
My point's this: You've got to open up, you've got to communicate with the public. And when I say the public, I mean the whole public, from the kids all the way up to the elderly. You've got to say what the problems are, you've got to say what the solutions could be, not be. But more important than that, you've got to talk, you've got to discuss things with people. You've got to hear the complaints, and not just take lip service and sit there and act like you're listening when you're not. It doesn't bother me, I'm a state championship impromptu speaker, I don't care if you hear me or not, but I'm giving you this chance to hear me, I'm giving you this chance to hear me because I really do worry about our democracy and about these elections that are coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak? Corrections of the Journal.
There, Anand.
Communication from the mayor.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett. I have dropped off a couple of documents in front of you there before you all got here. The first one I would like to go over is the 2017 Citar comments. Should be the one that was on top. I just want to walk through these fairly briefly and give you a chance to take these away and look at them for any other additional questions besides what you may have tonight. So just to hit a couple of highlights on the front page, it's more, the rest of the papers in here are attachments that we'll touch on. Eighty total funds in 2017, and Attachment A that follows that is a copy of the actual Citar report off of Gateway. Some of you may have already reached out and got that, but I wanted to make sure everybody had a paper copy, so that's what I'm referencing here. The second bullet being 72 of those 80 funds finished with a positive cash balance. Eight of the funds did not, and so I wanted to give a little bit of a detail here, and I'm going to walk you through that. So five of those funds, five of the eight are federal and state grant reimbursement funds, and one of them's an internal reimbursement fund. So basically, we had two funds out of our 80 that are operating funds that did not finish in the black. If you look at Schedule C, it's called 2017 Citar Negative Balance Details. I'm going to walk through that quickly. The first section where you'll see five different funds there, those are all general cash funds. So these are the five in that section that did not finish with a positive balance. The first one being Operation Poll Over Grant, $46,887 because we're waiting on federal reimbursement. You know, all the federal grants and state grants are always negative until you close out the grant when it goes to zero. It never has a positive balance. The next two, Home and Links and Ray Park, you can see the numbers there of what the accumulated operating deficit on each of those are. The 2017 loss for Home and Links was $290,000, and the Ray Park loss was $163,000. So it gives you, those are what added on to reach this current deficit balance in those two funds. The fourth fund is a fire safer grant, the second one, 2015 grant, same thing, we just wait on federal reimbursement. We pay the expenses upfront, we submit a voucher to the feds, and then two or three months later, we get reimbursed.
Mayor, I just wanted to ask you, I know you said you'd wait for federal reimbursement, but I noticed the date being 2015, so there's one...
That's the grant year. That's what they called it. It was, you know, the grant cycle, and we got the money in '16, or we got the grant in '16, but the cycle started in '15. The other one that's not on here, that actually has a positive balance temporarily, is the 2013 grant. And so that's just what they call it. That's the federal name for it. It means nothing other than that. The fifth one on here is group health non-reverting, and then once again, that's an internal reimbursement fund. We pay out expenses, we put employees' contributions and the city's contributions in. In December, our claims were 203,000 more than the average, and so we ended up having a negative balance there. Some months, we have a positive balance, some months, we have a negative balance. It all depends when the cycle hits of when our claims go out and when we deposit money in this, what's collected through payroll deduction and the city's contributions. The bottom three are redevelopment funds. The first one, Home Programs, $375 in the negative, once again, waiting on federal reimbursement. Block Grants is the second one, $3,000, waiting on federal grant reimbursement. And then the last one is the Light Elimination Program of $52,000, waiting on state reimbursement on that one. So that's the eight negative funds we had. Back in '15, I think we had 15 negative funds, and so we're really down to kind of the operating numbers. It's not, we're not able to make a positive balance in any of those federal grants or state grants, so I just want to make sure that was clear to you. The next bullet is Total Cash Balance of All Funds. So that is your Attachment C. You go to that one, the red, green, and blue at the top. That shows you all of our funds, everything, all 80 of the funds, and this is our cash balance at the end of the year. So at the end of 2015, it's $25 million; into '16, $35 million; and the end of '17, $38 million. So you can see that we're trending in the right way, that we're ending with a higher cash balance every year across all of our fund types, all 80 funds in the three categories. And then if you look at that one underneath there, I just kind of looked at the general government cash, which is all those funds that are related primary to operations, things that are not wastewater, sanitary, or redevelopment. You can see how our cash has gone from the negative in 2015, and we reduced that in '16, but now we have a positive balance in '17. The next two, the last two, shows you the general fund itself. So I have two different slides because I want to make sure we show it, you know, and explain it correctly. If you look at the general fund, in 2015, we had about a $9 million negative cash balance.
Then in '16, it was about $8 million cash balance, and we made about a $1 million cut
in that. And then at the end of '17, we have a positive $1.2 million cash balance, and that includes the $5 million redevelopment loan. So if you go to the last one, General Fund Structural Cash, it shows you the progress that we've made from '15 to '16 to '17 because this takes out the $5 million loan just to show you actual cash. So we basically cut the deficit a little over 50% last year. So we're down to $3.7 million out of the $8.9 from two years ago. But from a cash perspective, from state perspective, we have a positive cash balance, but we need to be real when we're talking about the remaining deficit here that we need to address. So I'll talk about that in a minute when I go to the next handout. So any questions on any of that? Once again, it's really just for your file and hitting all the high points.
Councilman Carson?
Yes, those funds that you listed as reimbursable, are those funds assured reimbursement?
Yes, uh-huh, yep, 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Nassar?
Mayor, going from 2016 to 2017 is where we, looks like we made our biggest improvement. Do you feel like we would have had those improvements if it wasn't for the DLGF order from last year?
Well, that was '17.
'17.
So we didn't do, in '16, the only thing that really changed was the trash fees started that year. That was our really increase in revenue. But '17 is where we've dealt with the DLGF issue, that we were already planning on doing something, but that forced us to do a little bit more and got cooperation from everybody to be able to knock more off of that deficit. Okay, so the second handout, we'll talk about '18 from a 1782 perspective. And just as a reminder, when the first notice comes, it's basically a worksheet. It's not the final information. And so every year, we go through this where, you know, you have a chance to provide some updated information, and you do the best you can with new information. This year is pretty interesting because, you know, of course, last year, system changed a bit, but the DLGF is getting much better and more timely with information, which is very helpful. So there's a couple of things I want to point out on this. When we first got our 1782 notice back, which I gave you a copy, that's Exhibit A, which you've probably already seen, they approved everything except the general fund and the MVH fund at that point in time. They wanted us to reduce the general fund by $2.1 million, almost $2.2, and the MVH fund by $312,000. So then that 10-day period kicks in. And so we did two things primarily to take care of our issue for '18. The first one is to amend the tax levy distribution. So if you look, you don't really need the A, that was only for reference. So if you go to the first double pie chart there that says initial 1782 certified levy. The way this works is, when we started, when we advertised our budget in August of last year, you use the levy that you had for that previous year, so in this case, '17, and then you add the growth quotient to it. So when we submit our information to the state of Indiana, they do the calculations on the property tax caps and what, how much they're going to get from a distribution perspective. So all we can do is look at, how much are we supposed to get in '17, and apply that to '18 with a growth quotient to that. So if you look at these two pie charts, you'll see on the first one, our certified levy was $35 million coming into the year, and then after we redistributed the levy, of course, it's still $35 million, but you'll see that there's a change in fire pension, you'll see that there is a change in cemetery, and a change in transportation. Those are the three that changed. And so what happens is, when we get into February of the current budget year, we have an opportunity then to redistribute the tax dollars that are coming in. Like I said, we do this most years. We put that money where we need it. And so in the case of fire pension as an example, we had a huge cash balance there. And so they're using, we build up a cash balance, and they're using last year's levy that we can't change for the budget cycle until you get into this 10-day waiting period for final approval. So we're able to shift some funds from fire pension, from cemetery, and from transportation because they don't need those funds in 2018. They are already fully funded and have adequate cash balances there. So this is your only chance to make that levy distribution change is at that 10-day window, and so everybody does that. So that was the first thing we did. Does anybody have any questions about that one, I guess?
So how does the process work when you send your response to the DLGF? Do they do a conference call? Do they come here? How does that whole process work?
Well, you can do it any way you want to do it, but you send them the updated documentation, and then they review it, and then they tell you yes or no.
So the updated documentation that you sent was just basically to redistribute the levy?
For the general fund, yes. And the fact, and the second piece here is the tax cap credits, which I'll talk about in a second. Those changed. Okay, all right. So then the next one you look at is my second or third bullet there, where the tax caps credits changed. If you look at the top part, you'll see that the original DLGF tax cap credits for our unit, Terre Haute Civil City, was $12.7 million. That's what they believed that it was going to be last August.
Wait, what page, man?
It's Initial Circuit Breaker Allocation. See? So in August, the state told us that our circuit breaker credits would be $12.7 million, which we knew that couldn't be right because there was no way it was going to jump up $1.7 million from '17's was about $11 million. But you've got to go with their numbers. So you plug in the tax cap credits based on what they tell you at the time, we submit it, and then they do their magic later on. In January, they came out with the amended circuit breaker allocations for everybody, not just us, but for everybody. And so they told us we need to use the new numbers. Our new circuit breaker losses are $11,205,000 for '18. And once again, these are estimates. We won't know exactly what we're going to get until the end of December when we get our final disbursement, but this is the estimates that come from the state that they expect you to use. So there's a $1.4 million positive swing for us, estimated. And so we had, we were required to plug those new numbers in and then make our tax levy changes, which made the general fund easily be supported and fundable and approved. On the MVH side, we didn't have enough extra property tax dollars to put there to cover that $288,000. So they, when they sent back, which, you go ahead, we can look at the next one where it talks about net tax distribution. That's where you can see the increase from 22.5 to 24, basically. This is because what happens is, when you go back and re-cut the levy, re-establish our, I shouldn't say carve it up, you know, it's a pie, and so you cut it into pieces. And when you do that, every single fund is affected, the ones that has its own levy changes the tax caps for all the other ones, and it affects other taxing entities also. And so when we did this, they had to go back and check everything to make sure that they thought their numbers were correct. And so that's how it happened, that we were able to cut $2 million to get it funded. Now, we didn't do it, but from the state's perspective, it's a fundable budget entirely because of those two things that lead to this net tax distribution of $1.5 million, basically. So the last document you have in there is the actual budget order, which you've probably already seen. I think Michelle posted it the next day after it arrived. They funded everything except the MVH fund at the $288,000 cut. And so we will come back to the council and ask for appropriation of $288,000, 288, 850, and we'll take it out of the cash balance that the MVH fund has. At the end of the year, it was $678,000, and then that will fund that budget to its entirety of what you've already approved last October. So that takes care of that. That's how it was done. And I know Councilman Elliott asked me to provide some information of kind of how we got there, how that happened. So, you know, once again, when you start putting this budget together, when you have to advertise it in August, things change by the time November comes. And so in this particular case, it was, is a very good thing for us. I knew it wasn't going to be nearly as bad as it was in '17, but it was very manageable, and this took care of it without us having to do any other, any other activities, any other appropriations or anything. So my last three bullets there are three things that the goal for this year is. Since we have an actual general fund structural deficit of about $3.8 million, our goal is to cut that by 50% again this year. You know, we have no new revenue. Maybe we'll get a little bit of property tax money like we got in '17, we'll see. But our goal is to cut that. So by underspending and any other things that we can allocate, once we kind of get into the year a little bit more, see where there's some cash balances, maybe we'll come back to the council and move some things to CCD or ADP or elsewhere, EMS, where there might be some cash balances or built back up. We still have very good cash balances in all those funds, it's just we need to kind of see how the year proceeds. The second bullet is, we'll be reducing our redevelopment loan by $3 million in June, so we'll pay back the $5 million. We'll be asking the council to approve a $2 million loan that carries us out for the rest of the year, and so we'll be reducing that internal borrowing by $3 million. And then the last bullet is, we'll continue to pay the band obligation down to the county this year by about 33%. So we've targeted a little over $2 million to go against that, to reduce that down to about $4 million at the end of this year, with the remaining due by 2021. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of that.
Yeah, Councilman Elliott?
Mayor, I just wanted, 50% of the general fund structural deficit, that would be about 1.9, half of the 3.8.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I should have said that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I had a couple of questions on something other than the budget. What is the status on the 19th market overpass?
Well, we're a little bit behind on schedule because of utilities, relocation. You know, they were supposed to be done on August 31st, and they finished on January 31st. But construction has begun, they're putting pilings in now, and so it's, I mean, it's moving. So if we have a dry spring and a dry summer, we may catch up some of those months. I would suspect that it'll probably open first of the year to traffic.
And then what's the status on that? I know last year, you talked about an app that was going to help with being railroaded.
Yep, and we're still, I don't want to use the term fighting with the software development company, but we ran into an issue with some poor quality of equipment they had purchased. And they had to replace it, hardware, the data gathering pieces. I think the software part works, but the hardware part, they just replaced those about a month ago, and so they're doing beta testing again.
Is that something this year or next year?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it should have been last year. We were supposed to deliver that middle of the year. So we're about six, seven months behind.
I've had quite a bit of phone calls about railroad, people being railroaded.
Yeah. Well, I will tell you, we've talked to railroad a couple times, and, you know, traffic is picking up, the economy's picking up, so traffic is, they're extending the length of the trains more now by about 10 to 12 cars, and so it's only going to get worse.
All right. Thank you for the questions. Can you answer?
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Carson?
Just a couple of questions, too, Mayor. One, I was wondering if we can expect to see any more rapid turnover in getting monthly financial reports more timely this remainder of the year?
You know, if we could, if I could get them, I mean, I ask for them every day. I beat them up constantly. It's, we're in the process of switching over to a new system that we've had to delay by a couple of months now. It's strictly a staffing problem, only having four people in department doing $90 million worth of business transactions a year. And so we're going to try really hard because I'm telling you, I'm calling up there every day saying, "Give me an update, give me an update." If we could get them out, we would. There's no reason not to get them out other than we have a lot of work to do. Last year was kind of unique because of all the things that we had to do from the council perspective, all the additional appropriations, and then the budget changes because of the DLGF. All of that had to be entered into the system and then checked to the penny. And so they didn't get that done until this week. And so the reports are out now. She sent them out late this afternoon, and we will try as hard as we can to get them out within, you know, a month or so. But we're switching over to the new system, so I'm sure we're going to probably be slow in January, but I'm hoping by February's information, we'll be able to get that out faster than January's.
Well, I just think it's, I think it's a problem, I find it a problem to be on this fiscal body for the city and be three or four months behind on having financial reports. And I would think, you know, as you've said, I would think that it would be tough for you, too. And I think as a city, we need to find a solution to this.
The solution is additional staffs. You know, the system will be more solid for us, so that's going to be a great thing that we don't have to worry about the stability of the system, and the report-writing capabilities are so much better, those kinds of things. But it's staffs, you know, and we're, we still have a huge payroll component, even though we've outsourced the ADP, that's helped some. But when you're talking about all these federal grants and everything, that we have to provide information to them on a monthly basis, and then, you know, our audit will be starting soon, it will... soon, it will totally suck up all of those people for the audit for about six months. And we just completed an IRS audit. That took nine months. And so it's a staffing issue.
The other question that I had was with regard to a report we received last week from Terre Haute Competes. Paul Griffiths here, as you may have read in the paper, had other comments about formally presenting the report on the wastewater treatment plant with some suggestions for things the city ought to consider. And I've had, I don't know about other council members, but in the weeks since that article appeared in the paper, they will be glad to know people are reading the paper, I've had what I consider to be quite a lot of constituent remark on that, phone calls, emails, that sort of thing. One of the things they suggested was that a group be put together in your office, being, providing the leadership on that. Is that something you're working on?
Yep.
Or might we expect to see some action on that?
We've got, pretty much the committee is just about formed. We want to bring a couple of other folks from, that are not connected with us in. And as soon as we establish that, we'll have our first meeting.
Will there be any just citizen members of that committee?
There'll be a couple, yep. Got two slotted.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
Questions on the wastewater treatment? Just wondering what the next steps were.
Yeah, and you know where that takes us? We don't know. But we'll let the steering committee drive us down that path, and we'll evaluate all of our options.
Since I've already got that floor, any idea, has anyone shared how long that process normally takes?
At least two years. That's, every example out there is taking at least that long. It's very complex and drawn out process.
Okay, thank you.
It involves the state, that's a big part of it because they have to approve it, has to go through the URC. So that'll probably add six to 12 months on it as part of the process if you decide to move forward.
Sounds exciting. Thank you.
Yeah, that is what I understand the issue was in a lot of those, is up to 12 months for the regulatory commissions to approve, up to a year from start to finish.
Yeah.
For a deal to be, you know, structured and put together. And why it's 12 months at that level, I haven't begun to think about that because I know I wouldn't come up with an answer.
Well, can I just add one thing? I, you know, we've been, Mr. President, I would assume that you would want to assign somebody from the city council to this committee. I've been talking to Earl because he sat on the committee with Terre Haute Competes. So we met, gosh, a month ago, I think, and had that initial conversation, just I wanted to get his thoughts. But I would defer to you to make the official appointment to this group, but I just wanted you to know that Earl's kind of been the key player there, so.
Just one more comment about Mayor, and I imagine you thought of this as well, but given the amount of discussion there seems to be in the public about this, I would just hope that there would also be ample time in this process for the public to have input as it goes along.
Yeah, there's not only that time just with this group, but then there are a variety of public hearings with the sanitary board and the city council because they'll both have to approve anything that happens. So it'll be multiple times throughout the process.
And I would hope that there'd just be also information and give and take sessions in there so that
Sure.
Public doesn't just have a chance on the night that it's presented to react, that they have a chance to react into, this is a big deal and
It is.
However it turns out, whether we just make some management changes or we actually make a bigger change with a sale or something like that, the public is directly affected by this action, and I would hope that they would have ample opportunity to express their concerns and ask for questions in it and buy into whatever the result is.
Right. Understand. Yep, thank you.
All right, any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. We'll move on to reports from city officials, and I believe Councilman Elliott wants to see.
Have you?
He may, he's got you. He may just know about. Earl? Earl?
Oh, wait, I, I'm sorry. Okay. I've put together these schedules using the Citar reports that showed up last week and thought of Merited working through those with you. The page one is a summary of the activity for what I use as operating funds of the city. May be different from what the mayor and Leslie uses, but I think this will work, work okay. The, so you've got the 123115, 123116, 123117 balances side by side in these 20-some funds. And the first observation to me is there's significant changes from 123115 to 123117 in virtually all of these balances. And for a variety of different reasons. But I do want to focus in on the 123116 to 123117 changes, the funds have had major increases and the funds have had major decreases. I summarize down at the bottom, starting with the major increase. The general fund improved by nearly $4,300,000 primarily due to expenses that we moved to other funds to comply with the 1782 notice. And we approved most of those, I think all of those in November of '17 when we took the action on that. Group health, non-reverting, that fund increased and it needed to. There was some increase in revenue and some decrease in expense. We'll see that on a later page. Parks and Recreation, it had a deficit balance, and of course, administration's goal was to get rid of any negative balance that we possibly can, and we did that in Parks and Recreation. Also, police pension had a significant increase, and again, that was to get rid of a negative balance, which is a goal. In terms of metric decreases, ADIT went down, and that's because of general fund expenses that got moved to ADIT that we approved in November. Engineering, non-reverting went down. They just had a pretty significant revenue decline in '17 compared to 2016. Rainy Day, we transferred that, closed that fund out and made those transfers to help address the 1782 notice. Home and Lakes was a normal operating loss. Waste in refuse, the new fund, it had a, somehow had a significant balance, that's Fund 625, the last one on the list above. It had a significant balance at the end of '16 and a much smaller, maybe a little balance at the end of '17, and that's what I would expect. I would expect that to be used, turnover rapidly to pay the trash bill. I mean, that's what it's collected for. EMS, non-reverting, it only went down $242,000. Had a good revenue year, but again, we moved some general fund expenses to that. Ray Park, $163,000 reduction, normal operating loss. And Fire Safer Grant, federal grants, the way those work, you include your cost and then you send them who knows how much paperwork and wait a while, and eventually they send it back to you. See that same thing in the business I'm in with clients that have federal grants. So then you kind of wonder, you know, well, how does the improvement come about from '16 to '17? And I try to answer that as best I can on pages two and three. On page two, I grouped the funds that have what I consider to be part of the operating funds of general fund and general fund related expenditures. For instance, in the general fund, we have an engineering department. We also have an engineering non-revert. We have a fire, fire division. We also have EMS. And then I put the fire and police pensions in there just to get the, and the fire safer to get all of the, all of the fire funds together. Then we have waste and refuse. Well, that used to be in Board of Works, so if you're going to compare apples and apples, you kind of need to throw that into your totals. There were some costs that went to CCI or CCD, one of the two, to address the 1782. Group health is certainly part of all the staff that the city has throughout all its funds in the rainy day. And I wanted to get to the general related total column. While I was doing this, I wanted to capture 2016 and 2017 property tax revenue that each of the funds had, and also wanted to capture the state pension reimbursement revenue that, just to recognize, you know, a significant amount, but not all of that is reimbursed by the state and try to capture those totals. So as I look at the footnotes that I put in there, the general fund revenue increased primarily due to property taxes, $407,000. The expenditures of the general fund went down while EMS and CCD went up, and that was due to the movement of expenses from general to those funds in 2017 compared to Significant decline in engineering, non-reverting revenue, and I believe that was primarily because the prior year still had the wastewater treatment plant and a lot of those expenditures and the supervision work that our engineering department does for that generated revenue for them. We didn't have near as much of that in 2017. Item B in the waste and refuse column, 625, that's the trash fee that council approved in 2016, was nearly $3.5 million lifetime to date for that fee. Then I noticed that, you know, a number of funds where there was, I'm sorry, E was engineering, I'm sorry, group health. I know there was an increase in what the employees paid that occurred in '17, mid-year, if I remember right. The expenditures in group health went down, nearly over a million, just over a million dollars. Don't know why, but really don't need to know why, I'm just glad that it, glad that it did. And of course, the rainy day fund, we closed out. So if you look at the total column over there on the right, you'll see 2016 expenditures at 50.50 million, 887,650 on page two, it's the third number down. And then if you drop down about four or five more lines, you'll see expenditures for 2017, 50,415,049, about a half a million dollar reduction in the total of all of those funds. On the revenue side of things, down in the bottom right-hand quadrant there, that's where I kind of summarize, try to reconcile from 2016 total revenue to 2017 total revenue and where I saw the significant reductions and increases. And in my mind, in my analysis, the impact of the trash fee, revenue of $1,649, increase in '17 over '16, and the property tax revenue of all these funds, $536,000, was it almost $2,202,000? That's what generated the improvement in the total cash position that's on page one, which is about 1.9 million. On page three, I pick up the other funds that were on the front page that weren't on page two. I put the four parks accounts together and got a parks-related total, Parks and Recreation, Parks Project, Home and Lakes, Ray Park, parks-related total. And then I get into the other funds that I didn't quite feel comfortable with putting them up on the, up on the second page. ADIT, MVH, Local Road and Street, Transit, Semitary, they're kind of a, kind of a lot different, different sources of funding. But just to continue with the footnote explanation in H, which is in the Parks and Recreation column, Parks and Recreation got a higher slice of the property tax pie in '17. I noticed an I decreases in the golf course expenses. The golf course deficits were $454,000 in total. We requested in our discussion last fall for that to go to 250, for them to work that down to 250 with a 15% revenue increase and a 6% cut in expenses. I know the mayor had shared with me, they're working on some things there. And I think, if I remember right, that's the one you may bring back a revised budget at some point in time for
Once we get a good
For '18, once you get it put together. And it sounds like that's, that's going to be achievable. The ADIT fund, you know, over $7 million of revenue in 2016. A lot of that was reimbursement for property purchases related to Margaret Avenue, where the expenditure must have occurred prior to 2016, the reimbursement came in in 2016. So that's, and looking at those numbers, I think that's what pretty well explains playing that. But yeah, there's a $1,854,000 difference using the amounts in the Citar reports for '16 and '17. And K, I just know K, there's a number of funds that had some significant cash balance increases in '17, from '15 to '17, and the one version of this that went somewhere, I had those numbers captured. And the, some of that was to, again, to get rid of deficit balances, that has been a goal of the administration, and some of the rest of it is just monies that built up. But if the general fund deficit is going to go down and pooled cash is going to go up so that we can repay our debt, some funds somewhere have to go up to keep the cash pool total up there where that can, can happen. And then in federal, in terms of transit, the experience of decline in revenue, and that was all in federal and state, state grant category, which isn't a particular concern to me. So again, if the total of all funds, page one, page two, is in the far right-hand column, you can see where we started with a minus 9.1, which is the number that's on the front page. We cut that to 4.7 at the end of '16 and then cut it further to 2.8 at the end of '17. So definitely is going in the, in the right direction. Total property tax revenue of all funds, $22,074,017 versus 21,245, what is that, $800 and some thousand dollar increase? That certainly helps us. And I'm doing the same thing there in the bottom right-hand corner here, trying to reconcile revenue from 2016 total to 2017. And the, it's the, you know, the trash fee and the property tax revenue increase really, really help us. Plus, you know, some, at least on the front page, some pretty reasonable, or really no increase in expenditures. So, you know, if the mayor's going to say, you know, we've turned the corner and things are getting, things are getting better, I've got to agree with that. And that's, you know, we're headed in that direction, and hopefully we can continue to do that and get rid of that general fund cash deficit, eventually get to do that and get rid of that general fund cash deficit, eventually get the Department of Redevelopment paid off in the next couple of years, and then hopefully not have to borrow as much, and the taxpayers just pay more down the road. Because I sense the council will, you know, not want to borrow that money short-term, but we do it because that's what we need to do. So I think, I think the, I think what I'm trying to say is pretty consistent with what the, what the mayor has told us, and that's what I see in our numbers.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
Earl, as we dig up out of the hole and approach zero, can you remind us of what we agreed or thought that a healthy, positive cash balance target would be?
I was going to do that next month.
Okay.
I didn't quite, you know, I only had a week to deal with this, and was happy I got this done for today. But yeah, I've got the notes back there somewhere from when we talked about it, and I'll pull those out and do that.
In my memory, as a councilperson, I remember being at least $8 million to the good in the past. Mayor, do you have any thoughts on what a reasonable target might be?
10%.
10% of?
15% at one time. Well, and that number's also in the, in the plan that, that U-Ball has put together.
And let me just mention that they are updating that plan as we speak. So 17 final, 18 budget, and so she'll do those next two years, and we'll calculate that out.
And this is a percentage of what?
Well, the cash balance, so based on your budget.
Based on annual expenditures.
What you have.
10%.
So, using your numbers, last year's, and last year's total amount of expenditures was?
68.
68, so we want 6.8 million if it's 10%?
Put me on the record, I'm talking about general fund. I'm not saying, there's some of these funds don't need a 10% balance.
Okay.
So it's going to be a smaller number than that?
Yeah, because some of them, they don't need that. There's just no reason to set money aside and then never cut it.
But there is, in that, in that plan, there is a balance, a targeted cash balance that's set in there for every fund. I do recall that's there, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll stop pressing and wait until next month.
Okay.
Looking to the future, thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
I've got one, and I forgot to get this in earlier, but watch her tickle, the 1782 is already behind us, you know, for this year, and we could.
Me too.
Get on to more significant issues, so, thanks.
Councilman Elliott, thank you for the work you do. I know you hear that from us often. Hearing your numbers and the mayor's numbers, I personally believe we have turned the corner as well. So I'm excited. Okay. Do we have any further reports from city officials? Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety?
There are none.
Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees?
There are none.
Items previously tabled?
There are none.
Tax abatements, confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
There are none.
Items on first reading?
Appropriation 1, 2018, $53,466.83 from EMS Fund Number 0270, the transfer's from Fire Department, Fire Training Number 05110000391200.
Mister President. Members of council, Jeff Fisher, Fire Chief. This is our annual 5% transfer from EMS non-reverting to training non-reverting. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions from anybody in the public? Questions from council? Councilman Crossen.
Jeff, you've probably told us this before, but how's that amount determined?
How's it determined? It's 5% of what we take in for the EMS non-reverting. And I transfer twice a year.
There are no further questions, I move appropriation 1 to that. I thought we only had two ordinances.
Appropriation is an ordinance.
It is an ordinance, it's considered an ordinance. Okay, then I move that we vote to, vote to approve appropriation 1, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved to vote on appropriation 1, 2018 by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Aller. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Them can't vote on.
It has to be unanimous, MacRae.
Correct, so we'll continue that.
That is correct, so continue to the next meeting.
Okay, so that, the motion to vote on this tonight has been defeated. We will act on that.
Next month.
Next month. Okay.
Would there be some information that the council would like for me to bring for next month's meeting?
If I needed that, I would ask for it, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further items on the first reading?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, there are no other items on first reading. You now have two CF121s for review. You were given copies last week. The copies that are in front of you are for next meeting. So everyone was handled, handed JACor Resolution 19, 2011, and Resolution 5, 2015 at the last meeting.
So just to be clear, there is no action to be taken on these tonight?
Correct, I wanted to give you time to review them.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to move on to another item and come back to this while we make copies for everyone again?
Do we all have copies?
They were handed out last week.
Right. I think we're okay, council members? Okay.
Okay, the first one is JACor Resolution 5, 2005. They originally estimated a total of 245 employees. They currently have, they're showing 272, but the math does not add up, because they state that they retained 241, and they added 30. If you add those two together, that's 271. But that's still higher than their original estimate. And just a reminder on the actions tonight, the first action will be, whether it is in substantial compliance or not in substantial compliance, if the council votes that they are in substantial compliance, then no further action is needed until next year. If you vote they are not in substantial compliance, the hearing will be held within 30 days.
Councilman Nation.
If there are no further questions or comments, I move that we find them in substantial compliance.
Second. Okay, it has been moved by Councilman Nation that we find Resolution 5, 2005 in substantial compliance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is found in substantial compliance.
Mr. President, the second one is Resolution 19, 2011. Again, they originally estimated they would have 100 and, I'm sorry, 203 employees total. They're showing 272, and the math adds up correctly this time.
Councilman Morris.
I'll move that JACor Resolution 19 is in compliance.
Second.
All right, it has been moved by Councilman Morris and seconded by Councilman Nation that we find Resolution 19, 2011 in substantial compliance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is in substantial compliance. All right, appointments?
Mr. President, there is a vacancy of the Human Relations, I'm sorry, not a vacancy, there is a reappointment that's necessary in the Human Relations Commission. It has been communicated that Elizabeth DeBeau would like to continue serving in that position. You would need a motion and a second to approve that appointment and a vote by the council.
Councilman Nation.
If there's no comment, I move that we reappoint Elizabeth DeBeau to the Human Relations Commission, as I stated.
Okay, it has been moved by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Crossen, that we renew Elizabeth DeBeau's appointment to the Human Relations Commission. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes.
Mr. President, there is a current vacancy on the Animal Control Board, and I have received communications that the vacancy occurred. So the Environmental Protection Division sent the name Jamie Hughes as a person to serve on that board for the remainder of the term.
Councilwoman Crossen.
If there's no discussion by council, I would move the appointment of Jamie Hughes to fill, to fill the existing vacancy on the Animal Control Board.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Crossen, seconded by Councilman Morris, that we appoint Jamie Hughes to the Animal Control Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Anything else?
Before we adjourn, it was brought to my attention that we may not have anything on the agenda at the first meeting of next month. The deadline is next, a week from tomorrow. Having said that, I would ask my fellow council members, do we want to vote to cancel the first meeting of next month if no new business is brought forward?
We've got the appropriation.
That's right, okay. I apologize for that, that slipped my mind.
The council could move the appropriation to be considered at the second meeting in April. As of right now, that appears to be the only item you're going to have for the first meeting. So if you would want to consider merging the meetings, you may do so at this point, because we, I doubt we'll have any filings between now and Friday.
Makes no difference, I may entertain a motion for...
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Aller.
I just want to make sure with this move this back that there's not going to be any problems with Chief Fisher.
Oh, Chief Fisher, do you want to address that?
Well, I just wanted to make sure, you know, with us, with this being money moved, if we, you know, since we didn't vote on it tonight, if we move it back to...
It will not affect my budget at all.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that you were okay with that decision.
What's the date of the second meeting?
I believe the first one is April 5th, and the second one is April 12. Let me confirm that the calendar in my head is working correctly.
Yes, April 12, this is the second Thursday of April.
So the tax abatements that you have before you could also be on the April 12 date, because we have plenty, we have 45 days from the date of filing, 12. Actually, here it goes. Hold on one second, please, Mr. President. They were filed March 7th, so we have plenty of time to have them at the second meeting as well. So we just need a motion and a second to move the meeting.
Did I make a motion that we move the appropriation, what is it, 1, to the April 12 meeting and cancel the April 15?
Second. Okay, it has been moved by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Crossen, that we move appropriation 1, 2018 to our second meeting in April on the 12th, and cancel the meeting on the 5th. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it, I don't need a, all right, it passes.
Now, if anybody objects to this, I'm going to be really upset. I move to adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved to adjourn by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Aller. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned.